Rachel, you ready? Good afternoon, everyone.
Hey, guys. Good evening. Oh, Dr. McNulty, your sound.
I think it's sound. Dr. McNulty, I think that your sound might be off. We can't hear you. Rachel, can you hear?
I can't hear you. Shows that he's unmuted.
Hmm. Technical difficulties.
All right. Bobby.
Bobby, do you want to do a sound check with him? Dr. McNulty, we can't hear you.
So if you have questions, she'll kind of interject and make sure that we have, make sure we're answering all the questions needed. I'm trying to make sure, stay focused on this, so.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that I pop in with those comments and kind of interject when necessary, when we can kind of get those answered and where I know it, we're going to talk about that piece of information, so.
Yeah.
We'll get everything.
When Dr. McNulty gets his sound back, I promise we didn't do that on purpose. It's probably like.
These girls muting us again.
Yeah, exactly. But hey, everyone, good evening. My name is Rachel Blackwell and we are here for the District Conversion Charter School Public Hearing. And so we're going to go through what that all means here in just a second. I'm sure most of you have seen the agenda that was on our website. So that's there. If you do not mind, right now, I'm going to ask if you can put your name in the chat and if you'll put your title, like if you're here as a parent or here as like a school representative. Just because, because we're not meeting in person and we want to make sure that we had the ability to have as many people on this as possible. And that's why we're doing it via Zoom. And, but we still need to have kind of like a list of attendees so that we can present that with our application that's going to be due this week and we'll talk about that. So if you don't mind to put your name in the chat, let us know who you are. That would be great. And I'll kind of mention that at the end as well. So, Dr. McNulty, when your sound comes back, feel free to jump in at any time. But, um, so Dr. Charles McNulty is on as a panelist. He is our superintendent. Is he on? Yeah.
He's going to dial in, I think.
Okay. All right. So he is on. And then my name is Rachel Blackwell and I'm a digital learning facilitator here for Plasty County Special School District. And I'll let Casey kind of introduce herself real fast.
Absolutely. Yeah, Casey Daly with Instructional Technology and Professional Development. And Rachel and I have both been in the district. This is our 15th year. Is that right?
That is.
In the classroom and then instructional facilitators together and then with IT and central office. So we are excited to be here tonight.
We are. And then I'm also a mother of two. I have two kids who are in the school district. And so get to be a mom too. So I get to have both lenses now, which is a little bit different than I used to be. But yeah, so Casey and I have been in instructional technology for five, five, going on six years now. And with that, we were here to kind of help with the one-to-one initiative. We got that up and going. And then within that, we were really just trying to find ways to innovate our school district. So we had the opportunity to visit several schools out of state and in-state that were doing some neat things, some different things. And as we were visiting, we're like, wow, we want to bring some of this back to our district. So I know it will serve our students well. And so I guess it's been a couple of years now. A few years ago, about three years ago, we started with Schools of Innovation. And so we'll talk about that as well here in a minute. But the District Conversion Charter, let me start by saying that this is an 18-month process. So we knew this is something that we wanted as well. It's an 18-month process. That is, and, and it just happens to drop in the middle of COVID, but we are excited to offer something different for our students, so.
Absolutely. And Rachel, I know we were talking before, some people must be thinking, why are y'all doing this now? There's so much going on and it's kind of like the state gives their own deadlines and timeline for everything. So we were already in the midst of this and these deadlines are coming up. So it's kind of like we're on the state's track and we kind of have to keep moving forward with what we were going to do because we all know the state plans a whole year ahead. So this is really for the 21-22 school year. So this will not even be for next year. This will be for the 21-22 school year. And I think that's probably an important thing to kind of say right away.
Yep. And this is part of our application process, making sure we're out here, we talk to the public, we make sure you understand what we're about to, to start and get your support and also just your feedback so that we can make sure we have the best opportunity. So, Dr. McNulty, are you on?
I think he's trying, I think he jumped up and he's going to try to get back on. And another thing, Rachel, I was going to say, we were talking earlier about is this is not all PCSSD schools. I know that that's kind of like, is the whole school district becoming a, you know, a charter conversion? No, this is just for our, the Driven Academy Virtual. This is specifically for this new kind of thing that we're going to be opening up for the 21-22 school year. So that's probably very important to know that this is not going to be every school in the district. Our schools will not be affected by kind of, this is kind of our umbrella to bring in another solution for something that we saw that definitely to meet the needs of our, our students in the state.
Yeah, that's such a good point. So, because you know, PCSSD right now, we have 25 schools that are brick and mortar. We have 15 elementaries, four middle and five high schools. And that's including the freshman academy. And within our high schools, we have what I just talked about a few minutes ago, Schools of Innovation. So three of our high schools have a driven program that's for blended learning. So essentially, it's a school within a school that is there for those students who want something a little bit different, but still want to be part of the larger school. So there's flexibility within their core classes to have a different pace. And so that's something, it's been a great addition to our school district. It's met the needs of a lot of students. But like Casey was talking about the big umbrella, like we wanted to make sure we have another option. And that is where we're talking about Driven Academy. So Driven Academy is going to be a K-12 virtual option for our students. This, like, we said, this is all kind of designed in the, in the process before pre-COVID, pre-ready-to-learn, which is our state initiative for next year. But opening a virtual school is definitely a goal that we've had in our district for several years now, just wanting to make sure. And this last year, we, we practiced with it. We had a third party that helped support us in that goal. And from that, we even realized how much the need was. Like, it was such an amazing experience to work with homeschool students, students who are homebound, social, emotional, I mean, just so many different facets here to travel. So there's just, there's so many different needs that we can meet within it. And so we're like, okay, we want this to be a permanent solution for Plasty County. And because of that, we're able to open up through the District Conversion Charter, we're able to open up a school, a separate 26th school for a district that would be a complete K-12 virtual option for students.
And which is so exciting, Rachel. We were talking earlier about how this really makes us more of a competitive school district. We all know that we're competing with not only other public school districts, but we're also competing with charter schools. And to have this option to meet the needs of that pocket of students that we did not have that flexibility before, I think just makes us a stronger district to compete not only with other districts, but also competing charter schools. So I think this is kind of like, we were saying, the best of both worlds. Kind of taking that PCSSD district that's been in place forever and really getting it behind something that we can have a more flexible model with. I think it's the perfect solution for what we've been looking for.
Yes. And so we have been working on our application, which we will submit. We have a timeline here in just a second. Let me go through this definition. So in District Conversion Charter, this is from the DESI website. It talks about you're usually converting a school, but we're kind of going through a different model. We're not converting any schools. We're actually adding an LEA. We're adding a new school for our district. But I love that lesson is where it talks about like the, it can be as broad as the imagination. Like, we could really think, okay, what do students need? What can we do to help meet their needs? And so I love that part of it. Like, we, we've been thinking of ideas and have a plan for that in place. So one of the questions that was brought up that we saw through some of our Facebook posts about this meeting was, one thing was about certified teachers. Like, we know that charter schools don't have to have certified teachers, but that is not our model at all. We plan to have the best learning, you know, teachers who can teach digitally as possible. We'll have
Certified.
Certified teacher. Yes, we'll have a certified teacher. We'll have a job description that they'll have to meet and then we'll do interviews just like we would for any school. So that way, we have the best K-12 teachers available that are certified. If we have to have any pairs or anything like that, like all that will be following our same school requirements as we do now.
I mean, that's such an important thing to mention too, because you know, sometimes you get the idea of charter school. I know even just previously being in education, sometimes you hear charter and you think of certain things, but it's nice to clear up that there are these school districts who have a conversion charter that can still be under that umbrella and have those strong, you know, things that we always wanted to abide by and keep them going. So it's a good point.
It really just takes away our boundary, like it takes away some of our barriers that we have to go about. So right here on this slide, we're going to talk about like the PCSSD mission, which we all know is our hashtag in our, in our Instagram, but it's equity and excellence. Like, that's what we want for all of our students. And so the mission of the Driven Academy, the virtual school is no different. We were just here to try to make personalized learning for every student. We want to make sure that we find their interest, that we can build on those, that we have that opportunity for kids to grow, not only within their academics, but as a person and they can, with, uh, meeting with our counselors and their mentors. And we want to be able to offer where they can come in for tutoring or come in for some blended learning. So even though it's virtual, if the students might need something, we might, we'll have that available for them as well. So it's not everything's just out there. We will have that connection with the students. It's still so important that we'll need to have.
And that's such a special piece too, Rachel. I think it's to say that, that it's such a special, special piece. A lot of virtual schools that are around us don't offer that, that option to come, come and do the face-to-face piece of it. So I think that that's an important thing that kind of sets us apart from a lot of other virtual schools right now that are around us.
Yeah. And Casey and I, like we said at the beginning, we've had this like amazing opportunity to really visit several and look at several different models and pick and choose. Like, how we love this piece from this. We love this from this part. And really just creating our district, having the perfect one for us. And district conversion charters are not unique. They've been going on for years now. There are about 30 districts in our state that have these models. And the models range from virtual. Some schools use this district conversion to have like a remediation kind of course for students who need that, career prep courses. And then also Schools of Innovation. So the District Conversion Charter, like it said, has a lot of different options and flexibilities with it, which makes it the perfect idea for, and the perfect solution for our district to meet those goals.
And I see Dr. McNulty just got on as he. His volume breaking over.
I do some. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I just want you to all know that I had an amazing first speech that only my dog heard. And so we're going to continue the presentation.
I can feel the passion with it too. Like, I could see you talking. I was like.
Oh, yeah. The dog is really, the dog right now is completely committed to the, to the program, so.
They're impressed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know. I've locked the doors. I think y'all have been here before. Like, I've had kids come into the middle of mine. So I made sure and trying to keep them out, so. But yeah, so our goals for a district, we'll kind of go with this, is again, it's a virtual option for PCSSD students. And our Dr. McNulty will probably mention too, that school choice will be an option so that we can really serve our community all around us. But of course, our goals are always student-driven to increase their understanding, their academic reformances, have them help with service projects and really just try to grow their, their academic growth. Like, that's important to us. That's some of our big goals. And I've mentioned this a couple of times, but it is an 18-month process when you start a district conversion. So actually, last year, we kind of had this idea. We kind of got past this. We're like, oh, we missed the deadline. So we really had this last year to really plan and prep for it. So August 1st, we sent in our letter of intent saying that this is something we wanted to do. Casey and I participated in the training to make sure that we knew the application, or we had the application. We're working with APSRC, the Resource Center, to try to help us make sure the application's the best as possible. And then we have our application that is due on this, actually this coming Saturday on August 1st. I can't believe it's going to be August already. And so. Isn't that crazy? We'll get that turned into them. Charter will review it, the review panel, and then they'll send it back to us in case we need to make any final changes to it. And then we will set before the Channel Authorizing Committee in October to present this to them. And, and we'll know, I think by December before school choice starts, whether we got approved.
But I think that's so important, Rachel, to go over that whole kind of timeline because there's so much that goes into this and, and so much preparation the last two years really for us to have this vision and now have it kind of come to fruition. So I think it's, it's a long time coming.
And who knew COVID was going to jump in the middle of it? I mean, that's the part that's kind of throwing everything off. Like, we were.
Oh, it's just COVID life.
Yeah, it was not expected at all. But, um, yeah, so we'll be able to have that availability. And like Casey mentioned earlier, like we have the, really the best of both worlds now. We'll have, not only will we have this flexibility and this almost like competitiveness now within our district, but we'll also have the whole district to support us. We'll have the business office, the special ed, we have dyslexia, we have a curriculum specialist. Like, we're not, we're not having to start this on our own. Like, we have an amazing support team behind the schools to make it exactly what we need. So, Dr. McNulty, if you would like to jump in here before we start some questions and just.
Yeah, just real quickly, I think the governor's announcement today of a $12 million initiative to increase access in Arkansas plays nicely into this initiative. That's something that we realized when we did our first shutdown, that there was some infrastructure inequities. It's great to see, you know, as always, State of Arkansas jumping in and supporting. But I think this initiative, again, we want to provide an opportunity to, to reach all our children, all our families, but with rigor, with quality instruction and, and with, of course, professional certified staff. So great presentation that I heard. And now we're kind of in a question and answer session.
Absolutely. And Rachel, I was just going to say, Robert just had a great question. Is this new charter school connected in any way to the Center of Innovation at the old Robinson Middle Building? So.
Yeah.
Yes.
Currently, the Center of Innovation is used for some of our ALE. And that will still be used. And, but there is plenty of room. And so when I talked about that blended learning opportunity and the tutoring opportunity, that will, that's what we're planning on using that second ramp in that facility for as well. To have that ability, that have that space where students can come in and get extra help if they need it. Proctor tests, just a whole bunch of different options. So yeah, that's definitely the facility we're looking at using.
That's a good point. Anything else? I don't see anything else right now coming in.
I know some of y'all are commenting, yeah, your names, like, your names, what your position is. Because that's, like we said, that's going to be our sign-in sheet. So if you, if you don't have a question, just, yeah, still please put your name and.
Absolutely. Um, so somebody has a great question. It says, how will we determine who is accepted into this program? And is, I think both of, actually, both of those questions would answer that. Yeah. How will they be selected or how, how are they going to be accepted?
Yeah. So right now, it's going to be open. I mean, we're not going to discourage anybody from being a part of it. And one of the pieces that we saw from one of the schools that we visited is they have a kind of a orientation with the students because sometimes you have this idea like, oh, I get to be at home, all that, you know, and they don't understand like what it takes. So that's something really important that we want to build into ours. It's not only a student orientation, but a parent orientation. So they're kind of actually walking through learning about the program while kind of taking a course so that they can see how it all functions and works. So that way they can really determine on the front end, okay, is this something I'll be able to commit to? And then, of course, with the teacher and mentors, we'll be able at any point to like really sit down and have those conversations if it's not a great fit. And then we'll have that flexibility. But yeah, right now it's open, just like any of our schools.
And just in case anybody is still joining us, it's going to be for the 21-22 school year. So it's not next year, but the next school year. And also to kind of reiterate the fact that it's not going to be all of our schools that are doing this. This is something separate that we're opening up for just this, this selects, you know, group of students that we're trying to, to be flexible with. How will the school be funded?
All right. So funding is still the same. So, um, again, these kids that are going to be part of this will still be PCSSD. So we'll still get the same funding. So that's, it will be funded through foundation funding, is I believe what they call it. So, yeah, so.
They're under our umbrella.
Have, yeah, we don't have like a separate fund or anything like that that's going to do that. We'll just, like I said, we'll just be opening up another school.
I know that Rachel and I have been looking at some charter school. They have some grants for conversion charters. And we're still looking at those, but, but right now, we haven't planned for that to be, you know, part of our funding. If, if something happens to fit that we can apply for, for a grant, that's great, but it hasn't, it's not in our sights right now.
Yeah, it hasn't fit our model yet. Yeah.
You know, if I could add to that, one of the benefits of a public charter is that we already have an infrastructure that's built. Many private charters are in difficulty because they have to, A, come up with instructional program, hire teachers. They don't have the infrastructure of services that we have. So this is, we're able to provide a really strong foundation. And we're able to take what we've learned over the last 16 months, 22 months, because we've learned a lot to make sure that when we hit the ground, we're hitting the ground running.
Absolutely. And Vicky just made a comment. She says, you guys did a great job explaining. So she's one of the community member education advocates. So thanks, Vicky.
Thank you. Yes.
It's important to us. We, we know that, you know, to be transparent and offer these solutions for students that are in our district and out of our district.
Exactly.
Is this meeting going to be available for patrons who missed it?
I believe it's recording.
It's recorded.
Yeah. So I don't know if we'll put it on our website or if we might just link it somewhere. But definitely, because we need it too for our documentation. So, yeah, we'll try to make sure that's available because I think it's a great explanation. And hopefully concise and to the point so that they can understand it.
So a question is, will Robinson be the only site? And I think, you know, that's kind of our starting place. But as we look at, you know, where students are applying from in our PCSSD, I think we probably have some flexibility around that. Don't you think it's Blackwell?
Absolutely. Yes. Okay, yeah, it's a good starting, like you said, it's a good starting point.
And Mike just asked if it will be K-12 and we, yes. It'll be K-12. Somebody else, Robert, said, will all personnel policy still apply to the employees of this new, this new school?
Yes. Yes. So those, that would definitely be, yeah, following all same personnel, same qualifying for qualified teachers, all that.
Someone else said, will the charter school affect the funding that individual schools receive if students decide to go to another school?
So, yeah. Yeah. So like, say that, you know, three kids pull out of Crystal Hill. It's all same within the district, so that's good. But we'll still be meeting the needs of that school based on how many kids enroll. But that, again, this makes us very competitive. And I think that it's going to be something we can get. And very few kids, I think, want to leave. I mean, I think we're meeting a lot of needs in the traditional school. I think this has just helped to meet those needs of those kids who are actually leaving because we don't have this option. So hopefully, we'll be bringing more students in with this.
Absolutely. Somebody also asked about busing. Will students be bused?
Um, it's virtual. So the only time that I think that we might need a busing situation is maybe with special ed or something. Like, if we need to have meet special ed requirements or something like that, we might. But right now, it's a virtual option. So busing or transportation would not be something we would be looking into besides outline circumstances.
Somebody also said, is there a limit on the number of students?
Um, I believe this first year, we kind of set our limit high, actually, because of what we've heard from other schools around. So I don't know, our cap and our limit are two different things. So what we will be able to have and what we can have. So right now, we're kind of just seeing what, what will, what will come about. So.
Um, does our.
I have a different answer with that, but it's kind of until we know what we have.
And does our dyslexia intervention program allow virtual meeting, you know, doing all the requirements for that?
I believe so. If not, that would be something we would definitely have an opportunity where students could come in to get those services if there's something that the virtual option doesn't meet.
Extracurricular. Extracurricular activities. How does that apply?
Yeah. So as long as you're meeting the requirements of the school and you, you will be able to participate within your zone school. So say that you're zone for Mama High School or Sylvan Hills. If there's, if you want to participate, that would be something we would work out with that school. But it would be through your zone school. We wouldn't have any extracurriculars really at the academy.
And I think that kind of answered another question because they said, will they be enrolled in virtual and zone school?
So no, not necessarily. The only time they would be in the zone school would be for an extracurricular.
I think that's it. There's, one other person said, will some schools be closed or combined as we lose students to charter?
Well, so far, actually, that hasn't been the case. At this point in time, we are looking at maintaining 25 schools. I believe we had actually a positive choice this year into the district. It is a unique year, as we all know. But again, remember, this, this school also be open for choice. And so we, we could anticipate people coming from charter schools or private schools or other school districts into this virtual academy.
And Dr. McNulty, you made a great point earlier about students who are going to be in this virtual realm because of COVID and kind of realizing during that, that this is something that really meets their needs from other school districts or private schools and things kind of choicing into our district.
That was good, yeah.
Are we looking to give Driven Academy students window-based computers right now?
Um, the models that we've looked at, we were still, they were still able to do all the functions with Chromebooks. So right now, that's still kind of our thinking with that, just because of managing those is a lot easier with Chromebooks. As long as everything can be done through Chromebooks, that's what we'll still do, just for price and management purposes. And somebody asked about CTE courses, I believe.
Yes. Will CTE, yes, will CTE courses be offered?
Yes, they will be. I'm sure, I don't know exactly if everything that is offered in the school would be able, available virtually. That would be something when we get our curricular partnership, like we would go through and make sure we'd have a course catalog for that school. So you'd be able to see exactly what we have to offer.
And Rachel, some people are asking about the, the link to this meeting. Is this going to be shared out? Will Jessica maybe put it on? I know we're recording it. We can email it out and have it be posted.
Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll make sure we have it out there, whether it's to our Facebook post or however we want to do that. Yeah.
On the district page.
It's good for anybody just to understand. And the better understanding they have, the more you can.
More support.
More support we have in it. So we are definitely very excited about this. It's a long time coming, so.
I think that's all of the questions that we've had so far. And Rachel, I know you have one slide that gives our information so that if there's anybody after this who still thinks of a question later or something didn't get answered, feel free to email us. If you want to pop that up there, they can screenshot it or take a picture with their, with their phones now so that they can save that information.
Yes, please do. Reach out to us. And your questions are great. It helps us to really think through it and make sure that we're hitting all the components that we need to be able to, to make this the best model for our district. And so, yeah, so Casey's information is there. It's just her first C Daly at PCSSD and mine's R Blackwell at PCSSD.org. And so feel free to reach out to us. But again, Casey mentioned this a couple of times, but this conversion charter is an 18-month process. It would be something we're looking for for the 2021-22 school year. That's crazy, think that far ahead. But this, but for this year, we will have an online option that the state has given us, Ready for Learning Initiative has given us the ability to open up an online option for our students without this conversion charter this year. So we're kind of taking advantage of that. And, and I'm going to learn from that and then, but make this 21-22 school year our kickoff year.
Absolutely.
But we will make, yeah, we'll have this presentation available and then we'll also.
Jessica already said, our communications director, she said she's going to post it on the web story from earlier. So if you want to find that link, you can find it there.
Dr. McNulty, I promise we didn't try to, we didn't sabotage at the beginning. We're like, oh, no, we can't talk.
The power of technology.
Power of technology, yes.
Well, you know, we, we see this, I think there was a, I think I saw something in the chat. They were talking about, you know, it's going to have another community meeting. This is an ongoing process and we really want to have questions open. So please utilize emails of Ms. Daly and Ms. Blackwell. I know we're going to talk about this more at upcoming board meetings. But again, this is for 21-22 school year. And we've got a lot to get through until then, but we really appreciate the, the connection tonight and we appreciate. the, the connection tonight and we appreciate the conversation.
Yes. I'm glad we could offer it virtually as well, so.
Absolutely.
If you haven't, if there's any more questions, feel free to text us. If they haven't, please, again, if you haven't put your name in the chat and what your role is, please add that just for ourselves. So we'll have it for our records of attendance. Thank you, Kim. All right.
Just looking to make sure.
All right. We'll give it another minute and then we'll close it out.
Rachel, you want to pop those emails back up just in case they need them? I think that's everyone.
All right, guys. Have a great night.
Have a great night.